Good afternoon. This is the July 15th regular meeting of the Largo City Commission. Would you please stand for invocation and the pledge?
You bow your heads. Heavenly Father, bless this meeting and grant our commission the wisdom to serve our citizens really well through our deliberations. Let us be ever mindful of our responsibility as wise stewards of our citizens' trust, as well as our responsibility of oversight of the efforts of our amazing Largo team of public servants and first responders. Protect all the men and women who serve in our community, and in particular, we lift up our officer injured in the line of duty this past weekend. We pray for her rapid recovery to full health. We pray for respectful discourse and your wisdom throughout our meeting tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a ceremonial item tonight, and you probably figured it might be something to do with the police department. Just take a guess here. Chief, it's yours.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I appreciate the time to let us honor one of our officers. It's had a long career. I think most of you know her, and she's being promoted from police officer to police sergeant, Nicole Cusamano. Nicole Cusamano has 11 and a half years of experience at the Largo Police Department. She holds a Bachelor of Arts in Criminology with a minor in Anthropology from the University of South Florida. She's a graduate of Law Enforcement Academy at St. Petersburg College. She currently serves as the Assistant Team Leader on the SWAT Negotiations Team. Her investigative background includes previously serving as a Crimes Against Persons detective, where she handled complex cases involving homicide, child abuse, and sexual battery. She also served as a Property Crimes Detective during her tenure with the Investigative Services Division. She more recently served as the Professional Standards Recruitment Officer. In this role, she oversaw the department's hiring process, staffing initiatives, and recruitment events, while managing programs such as college internships and a military transition program. Outside of work, Nicole loves spending time with her family. Her husband, Lieutenant Nick Cusamano, is a Community Services Lieutenant for the Largo Police Department. They have two small girls, who you can hear, Lillian and Madeline, who also keep them on their toes. In attendance is her husband, Lieutenant Nick Cusamano; her daughters, Lillian and Madeline; her mother, Christine; her father, Stephen; sister, Stephanie; and some of her close friends. Pinning her this evening will be her husband and her daughters, Sergeant Nicole Cusamano.
I'll just need you to repeat after me. I state your name.
Nicole Cusamano.
Do solemnly swear that I will support
Do solemnly swear that I will support
and protect the Constitution
Protect the Constitution
of the United States and of the State of Florida
of the United States and of the State of Florida
against all enemies
against all enemies
domestic or foreign
domestic or foreign
and that I will bear true faith
that I will bear true faith
loyalty and allegiance
loyalty and allegiance
to the same
to the same
that I am entitled to hold office
that I am entitled to hold office
under the Constitution
under the Constitution
that I will faithfully perform
that I will faithfully perform
all of the duties of the office
all of the duties of the office
in the city of Largo
in the city of Largo
upon which I'm about to enter
upon which I'm about to enter
Congratulations.
Diane, do we have any cards for Citizens Comment?
I have three cards tonight. First is Doug Brown.
Doug Brown, you're up.
Oh, okay.
I apologize for that, but I don't hear in the left ear at all. Bringing to the attention of the City Council, a situation we have on a street that I live on that I have been commonly called the drag strip. The city is, it's 20th Street Southwest that comes between 8th Avenue by Taylor Park and West Bay, and we've had multiple instances of accidents and speeding and illegal passing on W yellow lines that no longer exist. Working with the city for the last almost 17 years, trying to get something done with this, and it's come to the point now they're going to resurface the road. However, Monday, they had an accident there, and Charlie got hit on his electric bike. And the call for need there, and I've talked to the county about this before, and I've actually talked to the state of the District 7 people, and they said, why don't we have a three-way stop? Well, I'm here today to ask the same question, why we can't have a three-way stop. Talked to your traffic science people over there in your compound that you work from, and they're going to address that to the county, but since those two people don't get it well together, it's still non-existent. And today, I just witnessed, my wife almost threw up over it, a kid on a e-bike that almost flipped it over on one wheel in front of my house. That's an hour and a half ago. We've got to do something with this road, or we're going to have a fatality. Can say no more than that. I've got photos here, I can pass to you. You can have these to keep. I've got several made, and I'll give them to you.
Feel free to give them to the clerk.
I'll take one.
The clerk will take them.
All right. This personifies the need to have that stop sign there. It's a dangerous road, even though it says it's an open area study for sight, but there is no sight when you have two vehicles there. It goes away. The most related incident I almost came with was head-on with the sheriff's deputy chasing a motorcycle down that road, and I didn't see the bike go, the car go around the corner. I had no place to go, and he warned me, "First, I tell you for a disruption of an emergency vehicle." I says, "Go for it." He would have been buying me a new truck. Now, there was no place to go. It's a two-way turn lane system, and it's blind when you have another vehicle alongside of it. People make those bad choices to make left-hand turns in a hurry.
Okay.
That's all I have to say for that. There is Mr. Bang Train, who has also worked with me on this. It is scheduled for October to get it resurfaced, but that's right in the middle of the hurricane season. I'm not too sure it's going to even get done then. Need to move it up.
All right. Thank you.
All right.
Did you get the address there?
Mr. Kirk, couldn't we get an update on that in the City Manager Report?
He was going to be here tonight, but you couldn't make it. Who wants this? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Mindy Jordan.
Should I go ahead?
You're on.
Okay. My name's Mindy Jordan. I'm a private-duty nurse. I specialize in patients with dementia. My neighborhood was heavily impacted by the tornado that touched down several weeks ago. Sadly, there's only one insurance company that will cover these trailers of a certain age, and we were also impacted by the two hurricanes last year. So, they refuse to pay a lot of claims. A lot of people dropped the insurance because of that. Then we got hit by the tornado. So, you have people that are on fixed incomes, a lot of elderly residents, that have a lot of damage with no insurance coverage. So, I'm just asking the city if there's a fundraiser that we can do, or something that the city can do in behalf of all these residents, other than food drives, you know, something to actually get some money out for some repairs. Because as you know, FEMA does not recognize that as a disaster, but there were 160 homes that were affected. So, I'm sure all of those people think it's a disaster. So, I'm advocating for my community.
Are you in Ranchero or Bay Ranch?
Ah, Bay Ranch.
Bay Ranch.
And my home has about $30,000 worth of damage.
Wow.
So, yeah.
We can look into it. Can you look into that? See what can and cannot be done through the city or private organizations for fundraisers?
I think we're partnering with the SBA right now.
Yeah, certainly. Vice Mayor, we have, we actually signed a contract with the Small Business Administration who can handle loans for residents. They are at Largo Library at the moment, taking applications.
Yes, yes. People did put in for that, but a lot of people were turned down because they're on fixed incomes, sadly, you know, because there's criteria for the loan.
So, the city doesn't, we do not have a fund for disaster recovery assistance necessarily, but we do have, our staff is very adept at connecting people with resources, both in the county and the state. So, if we have a list of names, we're happy to connect those people with resources that they can help.
Yes. We called 211 and did all that. I just figured I'd appeal and see if there was some kind of fundraiser, something, something that could be done on the city level to help our community. Because I'm not alone. Like I said, there's 160 homes that sustained massive damage, and it's mostly elderly residents on a fixed income. So, that's all I'm doing is advocating, trying to, you know, stir something up, and maybe something can happen for everybody.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You're a good neighbor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for your time, everyone.
Next speaker is Matthew Fostini.
Matt Fostini, 10:15, Lake Palms Drive, Largo. Certainly understand and feel a person's pain. I wouldn't wish it upon my worst enemy. I've lived through it when I was a kid. We had a tree fall on our house during Hurricane Francis in 2004, and we were out of our home for two years. So, I know where that pain comes from. And one thing I would urge the commission is talk about what we have done. So, we have passed a Housing For All Plan, and depending on what park it is and whether the person owns the land, we now give mobile home residents a lot more flexibility if they own the land on what they can build on that site, when it comes to tiny homes, when it comes to modular homes, when it comes to other manufactured homes. You guys made that adjustment exactly for this type of scenario, to help people in that rebuilding situation, in which many cases, they're not going to be able to rebuild a mobile home like it was in the previous instance. So, just want to make sure we're tying all our dots together and making sure we're, part of our disaster recovery is housing for all, and that was part of something this commission adopted. The next thing I'd like to talk about is, I don't know how we got here, and I know this board isn't technically partisan, but I'm going to say the truth. We have a 6-1 Republican commission, and it is one of the most fiscally irresponsible, unconservative commissions I have seen. If we look since 2019, and I'm going to excuse two commissioners as they just gave up here, so please, my comments aren't directed at two certain commissioners. We've had a 7.4% growth in personnel. That is higher than Clearwater at 4.12%. It's higher than Pinellas Park at 4.36%. It's higher than St. Petersburg at 3.8%, and it's higher than Dunedin at 1.72%. This has all happened while our population has decreased 0.2%. Someone explained to me why we need 50 more staff members than we did in 2019 when our population has decreased. So, for instance, you look at Pinellas Park, they've had 4.3% population growth that justifies the 4.3% increase in growth of personnel. I can't say that about this commission. It is time to get our fiscal house in order. I urge the commission to freeze all non-negotiated salaries immediately. Order the city manager to look at over 50 positions, to terminate within the next two years, to get us back to baseline, and get our fiscal house in order, get us back to our pre-COVID state, and let's get going. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the cards.
Thank you very much. I need an approval for the agenda tonight.
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes six zip. This is approval for the minutes of the regular meeting, July 1st, 2025.
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes six zip. Thank you very much. Diane, can I hear the consent docket?
Item four, approval of emergency expenditure for aeration blower rental at the wastewater reclamation facility from Arizona Rental USA LLC in an amount not to exceed $92,690. Item five, approval of the scope and fee for task order number 2025-02 Highland Sanitary Sewer Realignment for 201 Highland Avenue with Mead &amp; Hunt Incorporated in accordance with professional services agreement RFQ number 24-Q-798 in the estimated amount of Item six, authorization to purchase VMware Server Virtualization Licensing in accordance with Omnia Contract number 2018011-02 from SHI International Corp. in the estimated amount of $83,000. Item seven, approval of representation agreement with Eric Johansson, P.L., LLC.
You prefer the consent docket. Can I hear a motion?
I move to approve the consent docket without commission discussion, including staff background, provided in the commission packets.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes six zip. Public hearing. Item eight, Resolution Number 2440, approval of the 2025-29 CDBG Consolidation Plan.
The Community Development Department is requesting City Commission adoption of the 2025 through 2029 CDBG Consolidated Plan and the 2025 through 2026 Annual Action Plan. Both the Consolidated Plan and Action Plan are a requirement of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in order to receive the annual CDBG entitlement funding. This plan incorporates other funding sources from federal and state to carry out the goals for these plans. The Consolidated Plan and Action Plan was presented to the Community Development Advisory Board, who recommended approval of the plans at its May 19 meeting. There was also a required 30-day public comment period from June 1st through June 30th to accept public comments. No comments were received during this time. The plans were also presented to the City Commission at its June 10th work session. Since that time, we have received our final state housing initiative partnership allocation, which is an approximately a 10% decrease from the current allocation. This change has been reflected in the final version of the action plan. Upon adoption, the plan will be submitted to HUD by the deadline of August 16th, and staff is available to answer any questions.
Resolution Number 2440, a resolution of the City of Largo, Florida approving the City of Largo Community Development Block Grant (CDBG) 2025 through 2029 Consolidated Plan, approving the City of Largo Fiscal Year (FY) 2025 through 2026 Annual Action Plan, authorizing the submission of Largo's Consolidated Plan and Annual Action Plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development (HUD), endorsing the Pinellas County, Florida 2025 through 2029 Consolidated Plan and Fiscal Year 2025 through 2026 Annual Action Plan, authorizing the city manager or his designated to accept said grant upon approval by HUD, providing for an effective date.
You got any cards, Diane?
I have no cards.
Any questions from today's?
Right here.
Michael?
So, thank you. Is there a different way we can approach how citizens, like, give input? Last couple times, I've noticed not very many comments from the citizens. Have we thought about different ways to get them more engaged?
Well, we do post the draft plans at the library and at City Hall. There is a notice that's put in the Tampa Bay Times, and there's also was a social media post that was done on Facebook.
Okay. All right.
We also had, during the last year, there was numerous different input sessions at community events and things like that, so that 30 days is really that last comment period yesterday.
Okay. All right.
Anybody else?
I move to approve Resolution Number 2040.
I just want to ask a quick question. How is it turnout when you do those? Like, are people showing up for them? Are you getting input from citizens? Are they attending?
They've attended some of the input sessions that we had this past year. We had a session at the Largo Library, the Learman Center, and there was another one. I can't think off the top of my head. And then we also did community events, like we did the Breezer Market, the Breezer Concert Series, the Night Market. So, we were getting input from the citizens at those sessions as well.
All right. Thank you.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes six zip. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ordinance Number 2025-25.
Good evening, Commissioners. This item is the second reading for the Ordinance 2025-25 for the vacation of a portion of a utility easement within the property located at 12400 Shawnee Trail. There have been no changes since the first reading. This item was approved at first reading, June 17th, 2025, by a vote of six to zero. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Diane, you got any cards?
Ordinance Number 2025-25, an ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida vacating a portion of a utility easement within the north five feet of the south 10 feet and the west three feet of the east five feet of the property located at 12400 Shawnee Trail, Lot 3, the Trail subdivision, as recorded in Plat Book 80, pages 66 and 67 of the public records of Pinellas County, Florida, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Do you have any cards?
We have no cards.
I move to adopt Ordinance Number 2025-25 on second final reading.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes six zip. Ordinance Number 2025-26.
Good evening. Before you, I have the second reading of Ordinance 2025-2026. It amends Section 17-37 of Largo's City Code, primarily the anti-smoking section. There have been no changes since the first reading.
Ordinance Number 2025-26, an ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida amending the City of Largo Code of Ordinances, Section 17-1, to add definitions for smoking, vaping, vapor, and vapor generating electronic device, and Section 17-37 to prohibit smoking, vaping, and active use of a vape or vapor generating electronic device in outdoor athletic facilities and outdoor park structures, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Do you have any cards on this?
We have no cards.
Any questions from today's?
I move to adopt Ordinance Number 2025-26 on second and final reading.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
One, two.
Who were the two?
I mean.
Thank you. Passes four, two. Number 11, approval of the electric vehicle DC fast chargers.
There is a presentation that goes along with this. Hi, I'm Shelby Boishman, here to talk about the Duke Energy Park and Plug Program, the new park and plug opportunity. So, Duke is expanding their EV infrastructure. They would own and operate the chargers in this new park and plug program. So, they've approached us about a new program for fast chargers. Right now, we do have some Level 2 chargers, but these are the chargers that can charge a vehicle in between 30 and 60 minutes. They've looked for locations with public access available 24/7, near amenities, safe locations, and near major corridors, and selected CPAC as a potential opportunity. The yellow circle represents the charger that is being removed, that is not operational right now, and then the three green circles are potential locations, not definite locations. If this passes this evening, we will meet with Recreation Parks and Art and the Duke Energy Engineers to select a viable location for two parking spots. All right. So, some of the benefits of the fast chargers. So, I did note that it's like a 30 to 60-minute charge, so the Level 2 chargers right now are more of an overnight location. These are faster, so people might hook up to the charger and then look for something to do in the meantime, which would be heading to Horizon or checking out Largo Central Park. It does fill a charging demand, so of course, the slower chargers, you need to be hooked up for a long time to charge your vehicle for an evacuation, but this would be helpful in evacuation periods to allow people to fast charge. be helpful in evacuation periods to allow people to fast charge. It promotes sustainability. Um, of course, fast chargers reduce the charge time, and Duke plans to offer below-average market rates for the fast chargers. So Duke would be supplying equipment, the installation warranty. Um, unlike the current, uh, program, they would supply the electrical consumption and the network connection. Uh, they would be signing, striping, providing ballards, and site restoration. So Largo is responsible, would be responsible, if you agree, to provide two parking spaces. At the end of this program, we can either purchase the chargers at book value, Duke can continue to manage the chargers, or we could request removal of the chargers. And then drivers would find these chargers through two different apps. And Duke would be responsible for any issues with the station, so we are not managing these stations. We are not reporting, um, any problems with them. The users would report problems either to Duke or through the apps. And I'm available for questions.
Do you have any cards?
No cards.
Uh, Mr. DeBreezy.
I think Commissioner Smith was first. If you want to.
Flip or coin?
Um, I'm happy Duke is taking care of these ones. Um, at, let's say, the end of this, uh, well, for one, you said that, uh, Duke would be managing, uh, managing them, taking care of them, we would not be doing anything, and it would do be the, through the app. Will there also be a number that they can call or whatever if they don't, or not using the app?
Yeah, it did, um, they did provide information that there were two ways to support the station, so, um, I do believe that Duke would have a phone number on there, but I can confirm.
Okay, 'cause I just don't, and my question is, are we gonna have people calling into the city, and then we're still gonna be the middle person to be managing calls to say, "Your, your stuff's not working"? Um, and I like at the end, we, there are multiple ways that can be dealt with this. Uh, with that, you said that they can be requested to be removed.
Yes.
Would that also be them paying to remove all the stuff also and get it back to where it was?
Um, I would have to look at the contract.
'Cause I couldn't see that.
To confirm.
All right. All right, thank you.
Commissioner DeBreezy.
Thank you. Duke is charging for people to use it, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so at the, at the end of the lease, which, by the way, how long is the lease?
Ten years.
You wouldn't happen to know what the book value might be at the end of the lease, would you?
It's hard to project what it would be at the end, um, because it's a newer technology.
Yeah, that's fine.
These are very expensive. I think it's over three hundred thousand dollars to put in a fast charger.
Should we purchase them, would we be able to charge?
Oh, the, oh, would we be able to?
Charge users for it. Ten years from now, probably outdated, but just in case it isn't, but.
We would probably have to just put our own meter on it, because I know they're, they're metering, so we would probably have to switch out meters.
And we would have to pay the electric at that point as well, correct?
If we, well.
If we bought, if we took them over, if we bought them out at book value.
It would be our meter.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Lowser.
He asked my question. I was curious how long the agreement was for.
Okay. Ten years.
Are we getting any money from them for this thing?
We wouldn't.
I mean, we're giving them space. We're not charging for the space, though.
We would not, correct, we would not profit from this. This would be like an attractive amenity.
We're, we're getting nothing. You know, we've, we've got an empty space there, and they're gonna fill that space. I mean, ordinarily, if you are, you, you own a parcel and someone's just going to use it, they're just going to park something out of it, they, they pay you at least a stipend for it. But this thing here, we're getting nothing out of it. Just making sure, that's all. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion. Don't all speak at once.
I move to approve the electric vehicle DC fast charging site host agreement, uh, agreement with Duke Energy.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes six zip. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You ready? You ready? This is award of RFQ number twenty-five Q eight-three-two.
Yes, we do have a presentation. Thank you. Okay, so I'm very excited to present the award of this RFQ this evening to CBRE. Uh, this award will provide the city with continuing, uh, services, um, to contract for the redevelopment of the two-oh-one Highland Avenue properties. And so I'll start with a little bit of background so that everyone is on the same page. This project does have a lot of moving parts. So, um, in November of two thousand twenty-four, the Largo voters approved a referendum to sell all fourteen acres included in the two-oh-one Highland Avenue site, which is broken up into the three parcels of City Hall proper, the Police Department, and the Emergency Operations Center. And since that time, staff has conducted engagement efforts, um, mainly in April of this past year, which was the precursor to starting the land use change process. The land use change from institutional to residential office retail was approved finally by the City Commission on July first, and the transmittal to the countywide planning authority is currently in process. Um, earlier in the spring, we issued an RFP for redevelopment consultant, and we did receive two proposals from this RFP. Ultimately, CBRE was, um, selected based on their, uh, successful project experience with similar projects. So for this project, CBRE will be providing real estate advisory and brokerage services. So as a reminder of the parameters that were outlined in the referendum, they're on the slide here, but it will only be able to include residential, retail, restaurants, professional offices, public safety operations, and recreational uses. And this project does include an option for the relocation of the Largo Police Department. So the scope of work outlined in the contract includes, um, five phases, with the fifth phase being, uh, optional, should we choose to execute it when the project contract is complete. So in the first phase, which would start, um, right after this contract is, is approved tonight, um, the due diligence phase on this would start, so that's really looking at a market analysis, doing some financial modeling and site planning, and during this time, we would make the decision whether or not we would be moving forward with relocation of the Police Department. The second phase is the market engagement, where they'll be working on the RFP, doing some marketing and outreach to a developer, and then we can expect an award of the RFP by August of two thousand twenty-six, and then execution of a development agreement no later than May of two thousand twenty-seven. And then should the commission and the city decide that we would like to engage with CBRE in the, um, post-transaction oversight in that optional phase five, we wouldn't need to approve the contract, but we would have to approve execution of the funds themselves, because that is not included in this award tonight. So going over a little bit more with the fee structure, um, first, the city will pay a monthly retainer of thirteen thousand dollars, which will cover all of the deliverables mentioned on the previous slide. Um, that maximum is two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. If we do decide to include Police Department relocation services in, in the contract, after the due diligence phase, the retainer would go up to fifteen thousand five hundred dollars a month, with a maximum of two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars for the contract period. Um, the contract award tonight that we're asking you to authorize does include the two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollar maximum to afford flexibility in the project planning, so we don't have to come back for additional authorization. But we will not do that unless we decide to move forward with the Police Department relocation. So there's also a fee structure included for the developer. The commissions are paid, um, directly from the developer to CBRE upon execution of the development agreement. You can see the commission, the scalable commission payments there on the slide, and then upon execution of the development agreement, when those fees are paid by the developer to CBRE, CBRE will refund fifty percent of the retainer fees that are paid by the city. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I will note, BMO was, uh, and our city attorney were very involved in the negotiations of this contract, so Sarah and I are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Diane, you have any cards on this?
We have no cards.
Mr. DeBreezy.
Thank you. Okay, you answered a major question I have. I didn't catch it in the presentation, but I'll talk about it anyway. I think the, I think the choice of CBRE is great. I like the scope of work. I like the company. I know their, their work is great. My original question was, they stand to make millions on this deal, um, through the, you know, easily, a couple million dollars, maybe even more, uh, in commissions. So I originally was going to ask that, or question why we were paying a monthly fee, um, to them, and if they don't get the job done in eighteen months, we're out to two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. I missed the fact that they're gonna pay back fifty percent of those commissions, um, if, if they come to a deal, so I feel a lot better about that. But I would still ask regarding to half that, you know, um, I, I think, I don't like paying, paying them, considering that they, you know, it's CBRE, it's not a cash flow issue for them, um, and that they are, they're gonna make millions on this, and, um, I, I would have been more comfortable with that retainer being paid differently rather than monthly, and then if they don't come to a deal in eighteen months, then they walk away with two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Um, I would like to have seen that structured a little bit differently, um, maybe originally even the whole thing being paid at the end when they come to a development deal. Um, again, it's not a cash flow issue for them. Um, now that I know that, it's still, if, if they come to a deal, then we get a half back. If they don't, we're still out the whole thing. So I still have a concern about the payment structure, and I, I, you know, if I had to suggest, I would, I'd break it up into two, into, into performance phases of some sort or another.
Okay.
That's, so I still have some discomfort about it. It may cause me to vote no, because I just don't, even though it's not a lot of money, it's still next year's budget, which we have questions about, of course, and it's, it does not performance-based.
Yeah, thanks for sharing that. I do understand that perspective. I think some of the things that they shared with us, as well, is that many times in these situations, they have gone through an entire redevelopment project, and ultimately, maybe the commission decides, due to public input or something, they don't want to move forward at all. And at that point, they've been providing services for several years. They do have some consultants that they're gonna be working with, for example, in the preliminary phase, um, on the massing study to determine the financial feasibility of the various project options. So they are incurring some cost, but I do understand, um, your, your viewpoint on that as well, so thank you.
Did we consider paying, because we have, we have a scope of work that has clearly defined outcomes through each phase. Did we consider a payment structure based on that?
We did not. Uh, I think what we did is we looked at other redevelopment agreements that they've had, similar, and we tried to follow a similar contract model.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure others have questions, and I can listen to that feedback as well. Thank you.
Man, I got a couple of questions on this thing. What is their opinion about the police station staying or going? Did they have any comment on that? Does that, does it help, hinder, or neutral?
Well, I think that's what we'll find out in the first phase. I mean, obviously, the larger the piece of property, the greater potential for redevelopment, but that first phase, when they do the ma, the massing study and the financial modeling, that's when we'll have an idea for sure on the financial feasibility of different scopes of the project.
Okay, 'cause then the second question, let's take the hypothetical that they turn around and say, "Okay, we're gonna make you a deal on the par, on the property, and we want the police building." Okay? Has anybody given any thought to what we do with the police building thereafter? Because this stuff is gonna move real quick. Once you get this thing rolling, you get that ball rolling, they're gonna, they're gonna wanna take this property real fast. What are you gonna do with the police building?
Yes, we've, and we've been discussing this, I think, from the beginning of the proposal of the referendum, which is, the Police Department will always have a home. Um, the, the idea that we would, would ever relocate the Police Department from its current location comes with the condition that a new facility is available. So the idea would be, it would be a phased project at best, and again, we would only move the department if it's financially viable for us, so we're not gonna, uh, take a bite that we can't pay for, um, uh, in this situation. So the, the idea was, we expand the, the parcel, give the option for potential phase development, um, and if we get a deal that comes through that's financially beneficial to the city, it could advance a project that is otherwise over a decade away.
You think that far?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, is, is this fee structure customary? You know, I know it's customary for them, but is it, have we researched with other realtors to make sure it's customary? I'm just not familiar with these kinds of seal agreements for commercial property as much, so I'm not sure if it's customary or not for us.
Yeah, it was customary in our research, but I can let the city manager comment on that as well.
And this deal is consistent with the marketplace, and we did look at, um, at other local communities who've engaged them on similar projects, and, and, again, modeled our contract after theirs, and our city attorney did a great job of researching, um, and with his experience in the area. We're comfortable we have a, a market deal.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Lowser.
So I just had a quick question about the timeframe. Eighteen months, I mean, it sounds like a long time, but it's not really that much time, especially when you're talking about, you know, something coming approaching at ten years. So, um, what happens at the end of eighteen months? We've been paying them thirteen thousand dollars a month, and we don't have anything. There's no developers, there's no, there's no plans, we're just out two hundred and thirty-four thousand, or is there, are there provisions?
I, I believe, do you wanna answer that question?
Yeah, so there's provisions throughout this agreement. You know, it's broken out into tasks, but, um, we can all, we always have the option to terminate, so if we're not happy with the progression, what we're seeing, um, there's a thirty-day provision to terminate, um, for the city, as well as there's for cause and not for cause. Um, we did also, um, review this agreement with our real estate, um, associate, colleagues, so they also compared this to other deals that they've seen, just to, so we had a comparison that wasn't just limited to see, um, this particular company, but, um, no, it's broken out into tasks, and then we also, we always have the option to terminate.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Johnson.
Sorry, I already asked my question.
Mr. DeBreezy.
Thank you. So for clarification, eighteen months, they do everything that they promised to do, but there's no developer. Is the agreement over at that point, or that's just a payment portion of it is over, and they have to continue looking for a developer? Can you clarify how that, how that works?
Sure, so what we have is a max on the retainers. We have a cap. If we choose to go beyond that, we would need to come back to the commission.
So we may have to pay them more if they don't get the job done?
If we choose to continue with them, yes, we would probably have to pay more in retainer fees.
I don't know if they're gonna be able to find a developer in eighteen months. This is a big project, and, and, you know, the economies and different things, and, and as it, as it may be. I hope they do, but they may not be able to. Um, so if at eighteen months, they don't, we paid them two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, and in order for them to continue the work to find a developer, we have, you would come back and have, we'd have to put out more, more money to them. Um, so that just raises, like, I, 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 I think the scope of work and everything else that's laid out is, is fantastic, and great job by everybody involved with it, and, and the choice of the company. I'm just very uncomfortable with the payment structure, and, and now just got a little bit more uncomfortable with the fact is, is that this could turn into, you know, three, four, five hundred thousand dollars, depending on, you know, how long it takes to find a developer for a project this big.
If I can, just, there are deliverables, so it's not just one company marketing, there are deliverables with each task that we'll have, and some of those, there's a, a value attached to that that wouldn't necessarily be required with additional lenders or continuing the service. A lot of this will not necessarily need to be replicated if there wasn't a developer.
No, it wouldn't need to be replicated, but the search, that they're searching for a developer would continue, so it may not be the same thirteen thousand dollars a month, but there would be some financial number. If they did all the deliverables and we didn't get a developer, and all that's left is to continue to search for a developer, I assume that they're gonna wanna, they're gonna wanna continue to get paid to do that. Um, or maybe not, you don't know, but we don't know that, but it, from, from what Ms. Onis is saying, that's certainly a possibility, that we may have to sign a new agreement, agreement with them to be able to continue the work, even though they did all, they did everything, and they may have done a great job, there just may not be somebody available, uh, or a developer that wants to invest at this time, but we want them to continue to search, and we may have to continue, we have to pay for that.
If, if I can, Vice Mayor, the, the, the way the contract is written, obviously, they're providing services for the fees, we're getting upfront, and that's, you know, the, all the materials and marketing, and the due diligence that needs to be done to be presented to the marketplace. At the end of the day, they're a realtor, and they work on the commissions, and they're a commercial realtor, very successful, um, and the commission incentives in the contract are significant. They, like any other realtor, would not want to lose that listing. So I'm, I'm, I'm confident that, that if we have to perceive, you know, if we don't have a development at the end of eighteen months, um, they will continue to fall back into their role as a commercial realtor and be incentivized by the. as a commercial realtor and be incentivized by the, you know, by the brokerage fees that would come from delivering a project. So I, I think we're, I think we're at market, where we are in any extension to that, where we would continue to pursue a market arrangement.
And I can go back and look, but is there, you know, what kind of assurances, like I said, this is deliverables, it's for everything to prepare for finding a development, a developer, and, right, they would fall back into a, they would fall back into a realtor at that point, and if they may say, we don't want to do it anymore, we'd have to find a new realtor, but, you know, we, I don't think we'd be paying commissions at that point. We'd be paying retainers at that point, because it'd be just a realtor, hopefully not. That's my concern. My concern is it turns into a long-term payment situation, and even though, like I said, you know, whoever has it's going to, is it going to stand and make millions? But if we, I'm comfortable if we say this is, this is a retainer for these projects, and then once they get that project done, then the retainer is over. My, you know, where I would move to, the discomfort is, is that there's payment beyond that because they didn't find a developer. And I don't know if the contract that we're going to have with them calls for, you know, addresses that situation or not. That's, I don't know if you have a more.
If we were in that situation, we would have to come back to commission for approval. That's how the contract is written at this time.
And approval could be just to have them as a realtor, but, you know, it could be anything, so. I think for future, I would, you know, I don't know if the RFP detailed out this payment structure in the RFP, so.
It was an RFQ, yeah, it was qualifications.
If it laid out, you know, but I think for me, and I, I can't speak for everybody else here, I think it would be nice to have a payment options that we can choose from, that may have been negotiated with, with the, with the, with the company, but, because, like I said, I'm still at a little bit of discomfort, but we'll see how more discussion goes. Thank you.
Commissioner Hall?
So I'm going to try and find my question from, after all this discussion, but I, I think mostly what I'm thinking is, like, maybe from a, a layperson listening to all of this, this is something that we have, we need to do in order to make this happen, correct?
Correct.
And there's only so many companies that perform this type of service. So as your department, and what, I guess, I don't want to say your job, but you found that this company offered us the best options and choices for the procedure to get this job done, correct?
Yes, they had the best experience in similar types of projects that could include a public-private partnership component, relocation of multiple properties. They had the most relevant experience there, I guess.
So, so in my mind, I'm like, okay, if this is something that we have to do, and this company has presented the best options for us, I, I just personally feel like this is something that we, we need to, I, I'm going to vote yes for it, because I, I just feel like this is, if it's not them, it's going to be another company. The options are going to be the same, they might be more money, and the outcome is going to be the same either way. And if this company has a good reputation and has the ability to achieve what we're looking for, then I'm willing to give them the contract, so, thank you.
Any more questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve a ward of RFQ number 25Q832201 Highland Avenue Redevelopment Consultant Services to use CBRE for continuing services and Task Order 2025-01 in the amount of $13,000 per month and not to exceed $279,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Four-two.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 13, the good stuff, approval of proposed property tax rate. Now, keep one thing in mind before we get started on this, this is the figure not to exceed. If we vote on a figure tonight, this is the figure, is the absolute maximum that we can use in the figures. It can only be lower than what we're going to talk about tonight. Thank you.
And there is a presentation for this?
Good. Get a head start.
Thank you. All right, good evening. This item is the approval of the property, the proposed property tax rate to be levied, and the time, date, place for the first public hearing for the property tax rate and budget adoption for FY26. The timeline for the proposed millage rate, the adopted proposed maximum millage rate tonight will go on trim notices on August 18th. After that, that will go into effect and affect discussions in the July and August work sessions. We'll kind of put a cap on what, what we'll be able to discuss and go over in those work sessions, and then inevitably create and basically form what the commission is able to adopt. So the commission in September may adopt a rate at or lower to the equal, at or lower to, or equal to this rate, but not higher. So whatever is passed tonight cannot, the rate passed in September cannot be higher, it can only be lower, as Vice Mayor Holmes mentioned previously. And then that will continue on for a second public hearing, September 16th, inevitably. Next, on screen, this is a table of the potential rate options as proposed, first being the rollback rate, second, the simple majority max millage rate, the proposed rate that was used in creating the FY26 proposed budget, and then the super majority rate. The, none of these rates have to be passed by either, have to be passed by super majority tonight, only by simple majority. But whenever read in September, they'll have to be constrained by either a simple majority or a super majority. Next is the impact on the general fund of each of these potential rates, and the projected fund balance of the general fund, if any of these rates were selected, showing that impact. And then, before you, this is a representation of the millage rates, ending with the proposed 26 rate, going back to fiscal year 2015, just for reference. Additionally, we have provided two separate homestead exemption homes and the impact on those two homes. One, a home that was, has been homesteaded since 2008, and then another one that was homesteaded in 2021. And then we also have two commercial comparisons, the impact on a newer commercial on West Bay Drive, and then a larger commercial property on East Bay Drive, and the impacts of each of these options, potential options. Then additionally, we've provided a breakdown of the impact on an average household with the proposed utility rate increases that you will have brought before you later on tonight. We've done this in a monthly fashion with an annual amount at the bottom, just for awareness and comparison. This rate is using the proposed rate, so any, any change would affect those numbers, depending on what is actually passed in September. Right. Again, tonight's vote does not adopt a millage rate for FY26. It purely caps the millage rate that can be considered for adoption in September, and will kind of give us a cap on the discussions for the July and August work sessions. One thing to note, these, whatever is passed tonight, and I've mentioned it before, but the amount will be included in trim notices on August 18th, so whatever is passed tonight will be on the trim notices, but will not be what is actually passed later on. It's important one for most of the people. All right. Is there any questions?
I'm sure you'll have questions. Diane, you have any cards?
I have two cards. First is Matthew Faustini.
Good evening, Matt Faustini, 1015 Lake Palm Tribe Largo. Again, I said this last year, a trim notice in our state statute is not a maximum rate of notice. It is not to tell taxpayers, this is the maximum, it's to tell taxpayers what they actually might be paying. It's to mean, to give, and let me read from Florida statute 200.065, so, um, two, subsection 2A1, "Upon preparation of a tentative budget but prior to adoption thereof, each taxing authority shall compute a proposed millage rate necessary to fund the tentative budget." Decision packages three and four, the fact that they're even in the budget, are an embarrassment and assault. This commission, the spending is out of control. You notice Commissioner Smith, again, asked way back for a cumulative summary of the rate increases and property tax increases. This commission has still not been, we were told you guys were going to get, presented it, still hasn't happened. So I did the work myself, using the, the budget in brief, which magically the FY21 one has been taken down from our site now, so I only had access to the FY21, the FY24, and the FY25. This commission has increased property taxes on the average resident using those documents by $303 per year. That's just the average resident. If you were to accept this, using their 115 number, that is $418 in yearly property tax increase, just in property tax increase since 2019, while inflation has only, income growth has only been 36%, that way outpaces the 36%. We are looking at, before the rate increases they're going to talk about, this commission and city has increased the average cost of living in this city $722 per year. That is 3% of the entire average annual social security benefit. This commission has raised rates 3% of 60% of our city's main source of income. Our city's main source of income is social security. Most of our mobile home communities, they cannot afford these above inflation increases. We cannot afford them. This has to stop. This commission has to stand up. And by the way, seeing how you guys acted on the last item tells me why we're in this mess, because staff is running the show, not you all. Thank you.
Next speaker is Melanie Wood.
Hello. My name's Melanie, I live in Largo. I'm actually one of the few people who is still here after all these years. So I just want to remind you that not everyone that lives here comes from New York with millions of dollars from their home sales. Some of us are still struggling to survive. When our property taxes increase, what it happens is, it shuts our young people out of being able to afford homes to raise their families in. We have people starting families that are living in apartments. We have our teachers that teach our kids in school, living with multiple teachers in the same apartments, because they, they can't afford to live in Pinellas County. So what's happening is, the people that work here can't afford to live here. And I know that most people are from somewhere else, and most people come here with a lot of money, and so they can casually throw down an extra $50,000 on the price of a home. But I mean, I just want to ask you to keep in mind the things that are going on in the markets with large corporations buying our homes, increasing the property values, and that increases our taxes. So our taxes are already going up with the increased property values. Please consider that, and please consider that we're not going to be able to hire people to work in the restaurants where we eat. We're not going to be able to hire people who stop the hospitals that we go to. We, we need to keep those people living here and working here, and right now, we're getting farther and farther from that ability. So just want to ask you to please consider that. Some of us work, some of us raise families, and it's really important to be able to have a home, have a stable relationship, a, a stable place to raise your family, and not in apartments. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments from the deists? Oh, let's see, who's that? Michael?
No, which one? Mr.'s first.
Smith.
So I know I asked about the structure, or the, over the last couple of years, where, where is it in this one? I see it in the fees a little bit on the fee page presentation, but I don't see it in the prop, the property tax.
We included it in the utility rate. We did not include it for the property tax, that it would be my misunderstanding, if that was to be included with the property tax. I know back when we were having that discussion in the April work session, I had noted it was the utility rates that we were discussing.
Could we have that, those notes before the next meeting on this?
Yes, sir.
I'd like that. And I get, I, I brought this up at the last budget, millage decision, trim notice, notice that, you know, we, like the Vice Mayor said, this is just a proposed possibility. But also, when people see their trim notice, that's the perception, the first perception they're going to get of their tax bill from us. And that's, personally, as someone who's lived Largo all my life, that's the thing that my parents always told me to look at when you, when you, when you buy a house. And I get, we can readjust and everything like that, but I go back to the perception of, here's a budget, live within it, I'm being proposed a 5.52 mil, and we're looking at the max of possibly going to 6.0565. I will not be supporting that tonight. I possibly could support the 5.520 that the city manager's proposing in his budget that we're, we're going to be looking at. I get it gives us a little bit of wiggle room with the six. I personally would like to go back, and, and, and I'm even not even comfortable with what the city manager's proposing. I was against the budget last year in the millage, but I would like to see a little bit more relief, and I would more shoot for the 5.5059 that I'll be looking for after our discussions of the budget. So at the moment, I, I can, I still feel uncomfortable with this, because like I say, it's the perception people are going to see, and right now, people are pissed about their bills. And I get it, you know, I work in a library, people coming in and talking about asking where to go to food shelters, because they're living off social security. And if I can't live with, if they can't live, I, I think government needs to sometimes realize that a little bit more, so. And, and walking homes, that's what I hear a lot right now, is bills are just going up, costs, you know, paychecks aren't. So that's just my views at the moment. Thank you.
Other Mike?
Thank you. Similar to what Commissioner Smith said, I know that this is just proposed, and it's to create wiggle room, and I, and I totally get that. We've all had the budget sent to us, and we, while we haven't had our formal, our formal hearing on it yet, you know, we all can read, and we all can see that, you know, revenue is, our expenses are outpacing revenue, and something's going to have to be done I would not support proposing the max here, even though like I said, it's non-binding, but I think it's, I think this commission should send the message, this is the beginning of it, to send the message that we need to start looking at our, at our cost. Not necessarily to, at this level of some of what our speakers have said over the last few weeks and, and emails that we received, but if we, you know, we, we're going to have to do it next year, you know, why not start now? Why not start to address it? So I don't, I would not support the maximum, even though it means nothing, but I think now it's about, it's perception, as Commissioner Smith said, but I also think this commission needs to start voicing that we have to address, and I know the city knows that. Budget is wonderfully done, and so much work to do, and I have all the confidence in the world that whatever happens with the, with the millage rate, that the staff are going to, are going to adjust and prepare a budget that's going to get, that's going to be appropriate for us. So I have, I have total confidence. So I have total confidence in them. But it's for us to send that, to send what the direction is that the city wants to go. So I would not support a maximum amount, an unproposed millage rate. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, you know, I appreciate everybody standing up here today. I've got 250 employees that, you know, live and work in Pinellas and Hillsborough and Pasco counties. And I, you know, I have a lot of people that, you know, aren't, you know, they're newer in the trade. And so they're trying to make the ends meet here. And it is difficult. I have six kids that are trying to, you know, trying to live here as well. It's not, it's really not easy. We had to make some difficult decisions over my last two years, you know, on the commission. I know we've had, you know, some, you know, inflation has been really high in our county for multiple years now. And wage inflation has been, you know, really high. And so we've had to make some tough decisions to allow our spending to go up because we need to take care of our team here at the city. And I just don't know right now what we, you know, where the cuts would be made to go down. But I do think we need to think about those things. We always need to be responsible with what we spend. I just don't like making a decision before I like know what I'm gonna cut. I wanna, I wanna see like some ideas of like how to make this lower if we can. So that's, that's, you know, I've kind of always been that way. Appreciate the hard work that went into this budget. It's fantastically done as it is every year. It just keeps getting better. And I appreciate the time. Thanks.
My turn. I'm probably the cheapest person you've ever met. Even if you talk to my wife, she'll tell you that. It's, I'm extremely frugal. I've always been extremely frugal. Going through this budget, and I've read many budgets before, I have an advantage on most of the people up here because of my advanced age. And I've been sitting at the dais for so long. Once upon a time, we outsourced many things. For example, most of the parks department, when it came down to the maintenance, the lawn, taking care of the trees and stuff like that, that was outsourced. When you do your bookkeeping on outsourcing, you save a lot of money on that because you're not matching the social security. You're not matching Medicare and stuff like that. You're just, it's a cut, you know, you're paying the contractor to do it. And we were, we were getting kinda crazy on that because we were just outsourcing everything. We didn't outsource the police or fire department, obviously, unlike that town in Georgia did. But we, you couldn't believe everything that we were cutting on the thing. And it came out, you were saving a lot of money on it. But the other side of the coin, the quality of service went to hell. I mean, it was just, the grounds in Central Park, they were terrible. And we went along with this thing. We saved money on it. But, you know, when it comes down to the budget, everybody up here, we're all ears. If you got a suggestion on something you think we can do, should do, give it to us. Matt, you did a great thing. I read through it. My opinion, it's too wordy. Put it down into a Reader's Digest format. Say, department, blah, blah, blah. Guess, do it a line item like that. Give it something that we can give it a quick look, that we can come up, talk to the city manager. Here, here's the suggestion. You know, now tell us where we're wrong. And that's really what you have to do on this thing. I mean, I'm glad we're getting people to look at these things and they wanna voice their opinion on it. Hey, God love you, it's our money. And that's where it's going. Well, you don't want us to spend it, tell us what you want cut. It's that simple. When you go to Publix, you don't have to buy the filet mignon, you can buy the ground beef. You know, it's gonna give you a good burger one way or the other. It's only my wife wants all the filet mignon. But that's, that's, I'm all ears. You've got a good idea on how we can save some money on this thing. Hey, let's, let me hear it. It's that easy. You got, you got a month. You know, but when it comes down to, as I said early on, you've got, the law says you have to start out with a figure. You have to tell the people, it's not gonna go over that amount. Oh, by the way, there's another thing out there. How many people are doing the save your, save our homes cap thing? I have found there's so many people, they bought property in Florida and they never, they never applied for it. It's an amazing thing because in my neighborhood, soon, the first year it was available, I applied for the thing. Now, I don't think it's really fair for people who have been here forever. But in my neighborhood, I've got one of the bigger houses. I have the lowest property tax rate. The lowest because of the save our home cap. And it's to the point now that my little Truman Capote office, I'm almost paying as much property tax in the office as I am at home. And of course, it's because of all the children that live in that office there. But anyway, that's for another day. But anyway, that's where I'm at on this thing. You got a suggestion? I wanna hear it. Don't send me, you know, the rise and fall of the Third Reich. Just put it down, the line item, so I can go through it, look at the thing. And when I, when I call up the city manager and start yelling at him, he's gonna have it in front of him. And I said, well, now tell me, what about this, 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 and this? I wanna see it. Maybe he's got some good ideas. We don't have, we don't have the market cornered on good ideas. We probably know more than the average bear, but that's about it. But anyway, I'll entertain a motion if there's no other comment.
I move to approve the proposed property tax rate for FY 2026 at the rate of 5.5059, or I'm sorry, 5.5200 mills and schedule the first public reading and for property tax rate and budget adoption on September 2nd, 2025 at 6 o'clock PM.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Pass a six zip. Get us your ideas.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Commission. Tonight here, we have ordinance number 2025-27. It's the solid waste rate increase ordinance. We are looking at a 10% rate increase. And we do have two options for you to choose from. And I will get to that in just a few minutes. So what's in both of the rate ordinances is on this slide here. We're looking at a 10% rate increase. So it's going from 27.96 per month to 30.76 per month. That's $2.80. And some of the level of service, I wanna just mention that the residents do get that have our service. You get two times a week trash service. You get once a week for recycling. And you also have four times a year bulky waste collection. Some people don't know, don't realize that. Just call, they'll come out and take that bulky waste off the side. Also, so that was the residential side. Commercial is also getting the same 10% rate increase. We have a $75 overflow, it's overflow fee for our front load dumpsters. This was based off a discussion we've had with solid waste about trying to make people get the extra dump or an extra trash can or an extra pickup and not overflow it, having extra cubic yards going over the top. It creates, you know, hazards when they're picking it up. It's slower, it takes some time. So this fee is just to kind of curb that. We don't see huge, you know, it's not a money-making deal. It's more of an operational aspect to it. And then we're also, we're also including a three yard and a 10 yard that was suggested by solid waste. It seems to be a very common container. So option one, and I wanna make this specific. This is just to the commercial recycling. These are the front load dumpsters that, that commercial businesses use in their everyday recycling. So the first option is how we've done it before. It's 10%, just like everything else. You'll notice in our ordinance that the two yard recycled dumpster is the same as the eight yard recycled dumpster. So there isn't really any motivation to choose a two yard dumpster when you can get the eight yard recycled dumpster for the same price. This is how we've done it in the previous years. And then option two is, you know, the two yard dumpster is still gonna get that 10% increase. But then we're gonna tier it based off the size dumpster. Now, the goal of this isn't to cover all the costs. There's still gonna be some subsidies for, from the garbage side of it. This is not covering everything. But it is just a way for our residents to right-size the recycling that they have. And you'll see the next couple of slides that most people choose the eight yard dumpster for that reason. And it's gonna add about 100,000 additional revenue a year. That said, if they go in and change it to the dump, to a smaller sized dumpster, then that number's gonna definitely be affected as well. So it's not a revenue generating. So here's a comparison of the two proposals. Again, this is just the recycling front load dumpsters. And previously, we would just have the straight line. So, you know, once a week was $37. Well, these are the new rates. Twice a week, 73, and three times a week, 110. And we're gonna be changing that and tiering it. So the, sorry, excuse me, the four yard's gonna get $10 more expensive than the two yard. The six yard's gonna get more expensive than the four yard. And so on and so forth, so forth. This is some of the information I pulled from different municipalities in regards to what they charge for their recycling. As you can see, it's quite a bit higher. They, it doesn't appear they subsidize so much from their trash service. They do charge the full rate. One aspect is, you know, moving directly to this. People are gonna question it because it's gonna be four or five times what they normally pay for their recycling. So you have Clearwater on one side. This is the single stream. And single stream is the mixed recycling. The other side is the St. Pete. And St. Pete does have some of the stagnant rates like we've had before. But they are only doing it for the cardboard. And cardboard's where you make the most money. So we're gonna go over some of the contributing factors for the 10% rate increase. Mainly vehicles, dumpsters, you got tipping fees. Recycling's still a cost to us. And then operating expenses and personnel. This was a slide from the CIP, not the proposed budget. So I don't know if anything has changed in here. But right now, we're looking at a 10% this year and then a 5% the following year. So FY 2027, 28, and 29 would be 5%. And the main driver of this is the capital. And the capital for this fund is mostly solid waste vehicles. So you can see here, in 2026, we have about 5.5 million capital, 5.9. And then it does tier off as we don't have to purchase as many. We also, I didn't highlight it here, but down towards the bottom, we did use some of our reserve from the hurricanes. So we're trying to build up some of that reserve as well. That definitely helps so you don't have a one year with a whole bunch of expenses. And then next year, you have a whole, a huge rate increase.
So this is spreadsheet of what the current costs for these vehicles are. And they've become quite expensive, especially with steel prices continuing to increase and availability of Class 8 trucks. This is Pinellas County's tipping fee history. Currently, we're at $54.50 per ton.
Go back one.
Go back one.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Have we ever pushed, have we ever pushed out the life cycle on those?
I'm sorry?
Have we ever pushed out like the side loaders? Have we ever pushed out the life cycle? Or is that just?
Seven years is pretty much what we get out of them for the side loaders based on the wear and tear that they receive on a daily basis.
Okay.
How much money do we make selling the stuff?
What was this? I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
How much money do we make selling the recyclables?
Well, that's what I want to try to get to the next slide. We're paying right now.
I know.
Net processing fee.
That's why a couple of years ago, I said, why are we bothering with this thing? We're paying them to take it.
That's where we're at today.
Why don't we just throw it away and be done with it?
Correct. So in May, we paid $47.63 a ton to process our recyclables. In June, we paid $50.73 a ton to process the recyclables, which is why we're asking for so much assistance in raising the rates here, adjusting these recycling rates.
Still, how much money do, well, I'll wait till you get to the slide. I wanna see how much we made, how much we took in on it. It's not much.
All right, back to Pinellas County tipping fee history. Pinellas County's had some decent rates for many, many years. The disposal rate was held in the 30, 35 to 37 dollar a ton range for many, many years. They've since started to increase this. Our current rate today, $54.50 a ton. My discussion this morning with the director, they're implementing an 8% increase, which will bring us to 58.86 a ton starting next fiscal year. And that 8% will continue for the next two years subsequent, adding on to this fee. We have kind of controlled the recycling tipping fees with our new contract with Recycle Services. Although markets are continuing a downward trend, we're still trying to hold that line.
So I'm sorry, I did not include the cardboard, what we actually make on cardboard.
A little money, I don't know.
I didn't include that in the slides, but we can get that information for you. So this is a little bit of a history of where the rate, rate increases were and where they've been. Back in '04 and in '07, we did have a period where we weren't increasing the rates. And then the next thing, you know, 2018, we started to increase. 2010, 20, we're doing another 10. And then, you know, the years, the outer years here, we have budgeted for 5%. So we're hoping to pretty much curb that with, you know, a 5% rather than having a large rate increase, you know, every, well, this, in this case, it's 10 years. But, you know, we wanted to be kind of consistent so that people know what they're paying for. Here's some of the different municipalities around the area and how our rates look compared to others. They're basically in the middle, Clearwater being much higher and some of the beach areas being a bit higher. And this is the same thing on our commercial. A lot of municipalities don't have the commercial aspect. I did reach out to Pinellas Park to, to get their, their rates. And they actually contracted with a different company for that. So these are the ones that I, that I could find seem in line with what other cities are charging. And then this slide, I think we all have this slide in here, but this is specifically for the utilities. So the solid waste is a $2.87 increase. But the total impact to the resident, if you approve all of them, is that $7.52 a month plus the millage rate that's not on this slide. And this is kind of how we notify our customers. We do, we do it through a statement, an insert in the bill. And then we have it on largo.com/finance and then through our social media. And I think that is it. Here for any questions? We're here for any questions that you guys may have.
Ordinance number 2025-27. An ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, amending the City of Largo Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter 20, Article 1, Section 20-1 definitions by amending Section 20-2D, mandatory collection of solid waste regarding mandatory service to single-family residences and additional dwelling units by amending Article 2, Section 20-30 to increase fees for residential solid waste curbside service, by amending Section 20-32 to increase fees for commercial and industrial container solid waste service, providing for separability, providing an effective date.
You have any cards?
One, Matthew Faustini.
Good evening, all.
Good evening, all. Matt Faustini, 10:15, Lake Palms Drive, Largo. On this one, actually, I think we're pretty close to the spot. Unfortunately, I don't like where the numbers at, but when you look at the numbers, it makes sense at least. CPI in our area is around 32%. Solid waste rates have increased since 2019, 32%. So at least with solid waste in that enterprise fund, we seem to be doing a good job. I know there's a lot of talk about the recycling. Just keep in mind that our landfill does have a limited lifespan, and if every municipality in this county was to stop recycling, our landfill would be filled in 20 years, and we'd be looking at probably 100% to 200% rate increases because we're going to have to ship the garbage to Hillsborough County at that point. So I think the staff's on the right approach with our solid waste fund, looking at mitigating the tipping fee increases that are going to come, and I hope to see maybe from staff some interesting ideas on how we can use some demand levers to lower usage, and whether that looks at, maybe we put weights on the arms and have a tear for the garbage can, and we charge by usage. That might be a conversation we're having in five or 10 years down the road. I'm not saying it's a conversation we're having today, but it is something to really look at, how we can mitigate those demand factors and keep rates low for customers who use the least, and inherently help people do what we're asking them to do through the market. Thank you.
Is that the only card you have?
Yes, sorry.
Mr. DeBreezy.
Thank you. I'm really not trying to be Commissioner or no tonight. A couple of questions. The, I'll start with the easy ones. The bulk pickup, the claw truck, right? That's what that is. So it comes down my street every Thursday, no matter what, whether anybody called or not, and picks up whatever anybody throws out out there, you know? So is that, I mean, that's good customer service, I get it, it drives around, but, you know, I've read and I've participated in the call four times a year to come pick up, you know, big stuff, but is that normal? That it takes its route, and whether anybody called or not, it's going to pick up whatever's laying alongside in terms of bulk trash?
If I could, most communities that do have twice-a-week service see about a 60% set-out rate on the second day, depending on their size of their homestead. If we were trying to do something different for a once-a-week pickup, we would have to be able to take that Thursday trash and mix it with the Monday trash, try to get it...
I meant the bulk.
You're talking about the claw truck.
The claw truck, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it comes down every Thursday, whether anybody calls or not.
Right, and that's another program that we could look at, and reducing that service if that's what the commission decides. We could put it on a pay-as-you-go type situation, if you'd like, or a reduced level of service of every other week or every other month.
Well, we say you have to call four times a year to get pickup, and again, it's good customer service, it drives around, if you've got something laying out by the curb, it picks it up whether you called or not, so it, you know, our residents are going to come to expect that, but, so I don't think it's, and I'm not saying we do this, but just as a comment before my other question is that, you know, if we're going to say it comes four times a year, maybe we should just, you know, at the thought, say that's the only way it's going to get picked up, is whether you, I know they have iPads and stuff that tells them where to go, so, you know, and it's great. The one time I called, you know, they were, I got an email back an hour later saying, "We'll be there on Thursday to pick it up," so, you know, but it doesn't follow our own rule, it just goes around and picks up whether anybody calls or not. Just a comment on that. Would you happen to know, and this may be a complicated question, I think, you know, this and the other rates that we're going to be talking about in a few minutes, this is the city service, and so there are some things that, you know, that residents, you know, they have to pay for, that's, you know, to get the service, and I think, you know, we should do everything we can to keep it, to keep costs down. But regarding tipping fees, do we know how much of the 10% proposed rate is made up of the tipping fee? I know, because some of that's also capital and stuff like that. If you don't have it, don't worry about it, I can do the math myself, I just didn't...
I don't have it, I just, I know.
But, you know, it's a large, it's a decent amount of portion of it, you know, and they keep raising the rate, so, you know, we have to, we have to, you know, adjust to that accordingly, so I understand that. Regarding the recycling, if we, and we may, I'm sure somebody's going to have to go back to those, to that slide, so, but if we raise the rates for the recycling, we may, they said it's 358 commercial businesses or something like that that participate, you know, chances are some are going to drop out of the, drop out of the program, and then it becomes garbage at that point. Is the cost per ton of the tipping fee less than what we're paying for the recycling?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if we do have people, if we do take one of those options and the prices go up, it, no matter what, if people drop out, we're, and I'm not saying we're going to, you know, I...
It would be in their benefit to continue recycling at a lesser rate.
Yeah, I totally get that part, but I didn't want to, what I didn't want to do is cause a situation where it's more expensive to, and I was pretty sure the answer was no, but I wanted to double-check. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson.
And again, I haven't priced out what's our residential rate around here for, if we did outsource that. Does anybody know what that is? I'm not sure. I know I'm paying about $100 a month at a house in Georgia, but I'm not sure, like, what, does anybody know what the commercial rate is for twice-a-week pickup around here in Pinellas County?
What's it? I don't know. I did not get that rate.
Other companies?
Yeah, like a Waste Pro or something like that, I was just curious. I don't, I'm not suggesting we go with it, I just, I'm looking at the value of the service we're providing. I think it's pretty good overall, but, no, we don't know.
I did not get that rate.
Okay, no problem. I was just curious. Thank you, that's all I have.
How much money did we take in selling the recyclables?
I do not know offhand, I did not put that slide in here, I don't know if you know how much we are...
If you come across it, just email it.
Okay.
Idle curiosity.
Yes.
Little more than idle curiosity. Any other questions?
Can you put back the slide regarding the options for recycling, so we can take a look at it again? I guess, because we have to vote on that, assuming.
Yes, yes, so there are two options. The one is the tiered based off of the size of the recycling dumpsters, and the other is just based off of the time, the number of pickups a week. So it's, they're not huge increases, they're not expected to cover the cost, but it is an operational, it's the ability for solid waste operationally to charge more if they're going to pick up an eight-yard dumpster, so that we're not just buying eight-yard dumpsters all the time when a two-yard dumpster can be much cheaper.
Can you bring us the slide?
Yeah, while you're doing that, another question I was going to ask, what if someone just wanted the solid waste picked up twice a month instead of weekly?
Well, we don't, we don't have that option right...
Would it make a difference on the price?
We don't have that option right now. Everyone in the city, you know, single-family gets the same, the same price.
Yeah, I know. I mean, I'd take our big trash can out twice a month, that's it.
Well, I think we find, Commissioner, that the amount of waste we end up taking to the dump is the same regardless of the frequency in which the trash is taken out to the curb. We're still making, you know, the same, the same number of, taking the same amount of waste to the dump regardless of the frequency of the trips. And I do want to point out, while I have the floor, that the claw truck that, Commissioner DeBreezy, that you see is picking up yard waste on a weekly basis, so it's not always, it's not bulk item, it does, the trucks do circulate weekly to pick up yard waste.
I see otherwise.
Well, not to say they wouldn't pick up, if they saw bulk item, they would pick it up, but they, but the reason they make, you see them making the trip every week is that it's their route to pick up yard waste every week.
No, I get it, I just, you know, I'm, my street, I'm sure I'm not the only one, they, I see people throw whatever out there, and it's, you know, it's not, you know, they're not putting the entire house out there, but they, you know, put a chair out there and it picks it up no matter what, you know, because it's, it's good customer service, I get it, they're there, so they might as well pick it up, but something to think about.
And I think I missed this slide before, but this is the commercial customers, this is what the service level that they have, so most people do have that eight-yard once-a-week service, so two yards not use all that much, but I'll go back to the rates here. There is a four- and five-time-a-week service as well, it follows the same pattern it was in the ordinance.
All right, I move to approve ordinance number 2025-27, option two, on first reading and schedule a second reading and public hearing on August 5th, 2025.
Third second?
Second.
Call-in favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Pass in six. Ordinance number 2025-28.
Good evening. Presentation for this as well. So as we previously discussed at the city commission work sessions and adopted in the five-year CIP plan back in May, we had spoke about a wastewater rate increase needed to do some upcoming projects. So there is one option that we are bringing to the city commission tonight for a wastewater rate increase, and that would be increasing the charges for users by 5%, and that would generate approximately $2 million for the fund. We need this due to operating expenses increases, debt service, and major capital project upcoming. As we know from previous dealings with issues with wastewater, every time that there is a repair that's needed, it's at least $1 million, so this is a very infrastructure-heavy fund and very expensive when something does not work properly or is damaged. So our, just a little highlight as to our previous debt issuances, we did, starting in 2014, issued debt through the SRF State Loan Program through, for the Wet Weather Project, the Treatment Plant Headworks Project, and the Middle Plant Project. And then back in 2023, we issued debt for lift station floodplain mitigation for several different lift stations. So in the 2026 to 2030 CIP that was presented, we had some changes to existed funded projects as well as new funded projects, and these are the ones listed here, the slide is from the CIP presentation that was adopted. So again, some additional information on our loans and what is currently outstanding in the wastewater fund. Again, this is an enterprise fund, it's fully self-supporting, we are not supplementing with property tax revenues, so if we issue debt, we have debt covenants that we have to meet by charging certain revenues. Again, to kind of do these projects with cash out of pocket would be, meaning that we would need to increase the rates a lot quicker. So these are the projects that I mentioned before. We are paying down on each of these loans currently, but we, with our current outstanding debt, it's about $8.75 million annually. So we have spoke about future plans for additional debt, and we are looking at, in the 2026 budget, issuing another SRF loan for the deep well injection. And in the CIP, that's budgeted around $26 million. The rate that we are estimating through the SRF program is 1.19%, so it's very, very low compared to publicly issued debt, but that would result in roughly $1.6 million in additional debt payments in the year we start paying on that loan. So as we mentioned before, and here's a little bit of a history of our wastewater rates, starting from 2001 and where we've been, we did, for a time, tier, so the single star up through 2007, we're showing that we did tier, we didn't bill for the first 3,000 gallons, and then we billed for between 3,000 and 8,000 gallons. We did make a change to say, let's instead do variable usage, which does make more of a tiered structure, so that people that are snowbirds are not here year-round, if they are not using wastewater, they are not getting billed on that usage fee. So our proposed increase today is that, for the single-family usage, would go from $32.23 for the flat fixed fee to 33.84, a 5% increase, and then the per-usage rate here is going up to $4.14. Again, this is tapped at, capped at 10,000 gallons on a per-monthly basis. So this is an example of the same, giving a single-family household using 4,000 gallons per month versus another example for the commercial property, so what is the dollar amount of the increase look like for them, as well as that 5% noted? And this would be the maximum for a single-family at 10,000 gallons per month, and this is just the sewer portion, so that increase would go up from $71.63 with our current rate up to $75.24. And then also a larger example for a commercial property. So we always like to look at our surrounding communities, and the ones that we had pulled here, if the 2026 information was available or proposed, that's listed there. None of the entities listed on this do tier their sewer usage beyond having a cap like we do at the 10,000 gallons. So we are not the lowest, we're not the highest. Again, the wastewater fund is a very capital, infrastructure-heavy fund, so things are not cheap when we need to do repairs. This is from the Long Range Financial Plan, the first column is the budgeted fiscal year 2025, the second one was our updated estimates for 2025, so this is just looking at our total revenue over the next five years versus total expenditures, and you can see in 2026, it does include the deep well injection, budgeted loan, as well as the expenditures there, to just show where we are in the next five-year plan. This is a slide from the Long Range Financial Plan as well, just kind of showing the very high level of where our revenue and expenditures, as well as our fund balance, so that line near the bottom shows our ending fund balance on an annual basis. Back in 2023, the city commission did approve for an ordinance that, which would allow us to look for that additional debt, so we issued an ordinance up, for borrowing up to $21 million, that region's loan that we borrowed was 9.4. We were waiting on, seeing if we got accepted for an LMS grant we had applied for, we did, so that second borrowing that we had originally planned for back in 2023, we would, we are not bringing back to the commission, but that's why you're seeing the actual fund balance last year being about $4.5 million. So looking at, you know, our total expenditures for the fund in that year, it's not a very high amount, and as I mentioned before, we've had multiple repairs that needed to be done in this fund that are well over $1 million. So this is what it looks like with the slated percent, the 5% increase in 2026, and then you can see that we're looking at 5% across the board in the next five-year plan, and that would be to mitigate having to come back to the commission and do a 20% every three years, kind of smoothing out those costs to go up with the inflation that we're So this slide was in the other presentation as well, this is again, just showing the amount of any impact to resident and their total monthly bills, so that $7.52 would be using, it's $2.41 for a single-family household using 4,000 gallons for the wastewater portion. So again, as I mentioned, a lot of the five-year plan information, because this is generated based off of decisions that were made into the CIP, but this commission is only taking a look at fiscal year 2026, we are not approving anything past that. That's where city staff will go back and evaluate annually, is that the amount that's needed? That's what's in our plan right now, though. So as we noted before, we do include notices in the utility bills, we started setting that out in May this year after the city commission had adopted the CIP plan, so we were aware then to know when we were going to be bringing this to you for adoption. The reason we're here prior to the budget for 2026 is because we need about a 60-day leeway to get it implemented for a 10-1, since we do bill through Pinellas County, we, if you have a water bill, we tack on wastewater onto that bill. So there is a bit of a lag in that, that's why we kind of heavily focus on the discussion for capital projects during CIP to let the commission know the reason behind why this is coming. So for this, I'd like to make a note that in the agenda item, the motion, I did have a misprint, it says August 6th, it should say August 5th, that is when the public hearing will be held. Other than that, I'm available for any questions.
Ordinance number 2025-28, an ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, amending the City of Largo Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter 23, Article 2, by creating Section 23-3, providing definitions, by amending Section 23-24C, discharge of certain substances prohibited or restricted, by amending Section 23-84, by increasing certain wastewater rates, and by amending subsection 23-85, by adding additional connection charges, providing for the effective date of this ordinance and the new wastewater rates, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Do you have any cards?
I have two cards for this one. First is Matthew Faustini.
You're getting your exercise, man.
I sit in the back, try to get my steps in.
I sit in the back. Try to get my steps in somehow. Matt Faustini, 10:15, Lake Palm Drive, Largo. Again, I just, I have been pleading for three years for this Commission to look at a tiered approach to prevent this exact situation. Let's pull out, because I think we, in each one of these items, we narrow in and we lose the holistic picture. And the holistic picture is that we are looking at a total of $722 that we've increased on the average resident. And when we look at the amount that this is going up, it is just at 71.4% since 2019. It's not sustainable. That's an extra $260 per year for the average resident before this 5% increase and the 15% increase you're about to get proposed on the next item. We are spending $250,000 to do a rate study. Dunedin has done a rate study on this. Pinellas County has done a rate study on this. Manatee County has done a rate study on this. Treasure Island has done a rate study on this. St. Pete Beach has done a rate study on this. Pinellas Park has done a rate study on this. St. Petersburg has done a rate study on this. I was able to take those PDFs, throw them into AI, and give you guys a recommendation within hours. What are we doing? We have the information we need. Now's the time for people to lead and decisions to be made. Thank you.
Next speaker is Carolyn Ready.
That's the longest I've had of sat in my life, awake. I came because I got that little notice in my bill that was an extra piece of paper. You wonder how people don't know about your stuff. I bet if you put one of those billboards on the side of the road that says, you know, "Budget Hearing," or whatever, more people will respond. I've said that before. So I feel kind of silly now, because it's a couple bucks, but I've sat here and listened to all the other rate increases that I didn't get a piece of paper on, that I'm hearing you rubber stamp. And so now I'm feeling like it's really going to hurt, getting a rate increase along with all the other ones that you put there. And I'm thinking a lot about my father, who, my late father, who today was his birthday. He worked for the Water Department for 37 years. And he said to me, when they were building all the buildings along US 19, you know, every one of those apartments has two toilets in it, and what goes in must go out. So that's the sewer. So that's what got me over here. All the buildings that you approve in Largo, do you, in your new City Hall, I wonder how many toilets are in there. Do you increase, give them a big budget? I know that you give them lots of incentives to build, lots of discounts. Do you tell them to stick money into the sewer? Because we're working in my neighborhood, your new City Hall neighborhood, on 1953 sewers, and it hasn't been proved at all. And all the building keeps going on, and it's already, before any of the new City Hall starts flushing, was backing up in the homes at the end of Fourth Street and First Avenue, or Fourth Avenue and First Street. Sorry. So I think you should think more ahead of different ways to take money out of other things than out of the residents' pockets, who are coming here to look at you and feeling kind of sad. I guess that's about all I can put to that.
Thank you. Can you have someone look into that? She said the sewer just keeps backing up on them.
Well, I'm not, if she-
It was. Yes. They were working for three nights in a row until midnight one night. The sewer people-
So it's working fine, though?
I think they got it working fine. I mean, until the next one starts flushing. And then you have the development on First Avenue, where you had 58 homes approved. And now they're wanting to increase that. In the meantime, you took out all the paying residents in the trailer park that was there, and now it's a forest of grass.
All right. Thank you very much.
That we need to drive by every day because you close four.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith.
Maybe it's a good idea to add a billboard.
Or better seats.
Or better seats. Maybe the new City Hall, I bet. Where was I going on this one? And when we do a development, staff looks at it, about the waste, what's going in, the I can go on that one a little bit more. On that, on page four of your presentation, there's new projects of a wastewater and a stormwater utility rate study. I'm a no on this one, just because there's many other things I have a problem with, especially the deep-well injectors. That's a different other story. But I'm hoping, I pray to God, that I don't sit there and see a rate study that's going to cost me a whole bunch of money and Mr. Faustini's numbers pop up. That's the only thing. I'm hoping that I don't see that in that study we pay for, because I'm going to be really upset that someone could feed this into AI. I probably know it's more, but I'm really, it will really upset me on that. But I just want to state that I will not be supporting this because of the deep-water injector. I don't support that, so.
Any other questions? I have one. It's a conversation I had with the city manager today. It's really kind of odd that we pay the county to get the water, and then we have to pay the city to get rid of it. I mean, this is the, and I said, it's too bad we just can't have one-size-fits-all, where you get all of it, you get and you give all of it in one spot. But anyway, not practical. It's merely an observation. It's been shared, nothing more. And by the way, I have no problem with that deep-well injection. That's coming. There's a lot of stuff that, you know, this environmental stuff, that you're going to see this progression going on. You're going to see the thing with the electric cars. That's going to change. You're going to find, as far as the solid waste is concerned and the incinerator out there, I read a report the other day that they're actually making construction material out of the ash from, instead of piling it up to where they're doing it right now, they're making construction bricks and things like that. They're making it out of the ashes. It's a very good thing. Down in Mexico, they're making houses out of, they want the old plastic milk bottles and stuff like that. They melt it down. They make it into bricks, and they're building houses out of it. And the houses are, they're totally, not a bug in the world's going to eat anything from them. And they're very affordable. The bricks are cheap to make. They're getting the materials for nothing. So you're going to see a lot of this stuff is going to be changing. So anyway, I'll entertain a motion if anybody wants to make one. Don't all speak at once.
What do we do if nobody wants to make a motion?
Then we don't have garbage service next year.
This is wastewater.
I'll make the motion so it's, so the vote can happen. I move to approve ordinance number 2025-28 on first reading and schedule a second reading and public hearing on August 5th, 2025.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Hold the board, please.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner DeFrezzi?
No.
Vice Mayor Hobbs?
Yes.
Commissioner Lauser?
Yes.
Commissioner Holt?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carries forward to him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 16, ordinance number 2529.
All right. So this ordinance is referring to stormwater rates, and we have provided two different options here. So the first option, again, these are based off of the projects that we talked about during the five-year CIP plan. This one is the 15% increase, and that would take the residential and the charge per ERU or equivalent residential unit to 1772 per month from 1541. So that would be a $2.31 per month increase, and it's $27.72 annually for a single-family residential customer. So this would generate $1.8 million in additional revenue for the fund, and I have the projected revenue shown there. So the other option that we have provided is a 7.5% increase. So this would be half of the first one, and this would be a $1.16 per month increase, taking the rate per ERU to $16.57 per month. This would create about $900,000 in additional revenue for the fund. Another option is always no increase, and we keep in line with the existing ordinance, and that would be 0%. So this option would require no City Commission action necessary besides rejecting the motion.
To inform today's discussion, we wanted to remind the Commission of a report that staff prepared back in fiscal year 2021. Team members across Engineering Services, Public Works, Administration, and the Finance Departments created a comprehensive stormwater asset portfolio, long-term resource demands report. This report, this report has been referenced in a lot of previous rate discussions regarding the stormwater program. Colloquially, a lot of commissioners have adopted the backlog, is what they're referring to with this report. There's a lot of needs that we identified back in 2021. The report analyzed activity across the entire stormwater program, ranging from our asset database, our ONM and Public Works, ONM being operations and maintenance activities, capital projects, and also stormwater quality concerns. The intention was to identify needs across the entire stormwater program and calculate funding gaps that needed to be addressed in order to improve the stormwater services we provide. The improvements identified would serve to address assets that were past their useful life and to mitigate risks of flooding, and also to change our levels of service to be more proactive and less reactive in our operations. So we structured it in different tiers. In the report, it was five different tiers. We're going to talk about the first three. Tier one being our operations and maintenance, primarily out of Public Works from our Streets and Stormwater Division. Just to get a little background, our city stormwater system is vast. We have over 48 miles of stormwater pipes that we own and maintain, over 38 miles of stormwater ditches and canals that we maintain, and also over 3,000 inlet structures and manholes that we maintain throughout the city. So we're busy. The first tier was actually one of the earliest items that we addressed through funding needs. We showed on the screen, in a previous fiscal year, we onboarded a new vector truck with two operators to prevent downtime and increase our proactive maintenance of our pollution control devices and cleaning our stormwater pipes. We also onboarded one new team member to the construction crew to increase the number of stormwater repairs and rehabilitation. And the third thing is getting one additional long-arm mower, so that we can do a better job during the summer months to clean out ditches and be more proactive in that, instead of reacting to a lot of service requests that do come in every rainy season. So I'm proud to say that this year, we are on track to closing the most work orders in the Streets and Stormwater Division than we ever have. We're currently at 2,300, closed work orders for the year, and continuing to go on, and also responding to over 650 certain requests this fiscal year. Tier two and tier three are based on addressing lifecycle needs relating to our stormwater pipe systems. As a standard with pretty much all built structures, it's an aging infrastructure. It ages over time. And during the analysis back in 2021, the team identified over 1,400 pipe segments that would be beyond their useful service life by 2026. By 2045, that number becomes over 2,000. Pipe segments are going to be beyond their useful service life. These pipes are split across two different tiers. You can see here tier two and tier three. Tier two being smaller pipe projects, things that can be done without engineering designs. And then tier three would be the larger capital-sized projects, things that would require, you know, major, major roadways, and it would be in our CIP program. So what that sets up is looking at this graph. So I'm going to pause here for a little bit of extra time to talk about the different pipe types and what this is. We did this report back in 2021 to set up conversation for 2026, and the stormwater rate increases were implemented to cover a gap, and the gap is what we're looking at right here, to be able to address about $2.5 million annually, to be able to address these aging pipes. What you see in the dark blue shaded areas is our cheapest and most direct option to lengthen the length of a pipe is to line it. So corrugated pipe lining systems is a way that we can take an aging corrugated pipe or an aging reinforced concrete pipe and add, you know, 20-plus years to its service life. Then the dark gray bars, which would be across the first five years, represents expenditures to replace corrugated pipe. Corrugated pipe is our largest likelihood-of-failure asset in the stormwater systems. We're finding that 25 years, we're lucky to get that out of those pipes. It's the flora and environment, corrosion, and whether it be coming from groundwater because we have very high water tables, or just be, you know, the temperatures or the water that's going through the stormwater system. And so in order to get ahead of that, you know, we are frequently, you know, facing corrugated pipe failures. The recent emergency repairs along West Bay Drive and on Third Avenue Southwest were failures of corrugated pipe that was installed in the 1990s. So, and when we think of a lifecycle of a pipe, we want it to be reinforced concrete. We want it to last over 50 years. And so we need to address these as they're starting to fail. And then the yellow bars are the everything else. So whether it be HDPE pipe, PVC piping, and reinforced concrete, that's when those life cycles for each of those pipes, or at least the set of expenditures each year for that pipe. So that's what this represents. And then beyond the report that we did in 2020, we've had a lot of discussions following the hurricane season in 2025. Every year, we review our capital improvements program projects. This past year, we identified two new projects, which would be the Brookside Neighborhood Floodbait Man and Ditch Rehabilitation Project, and also the Nation Gardens Resiliency Improvements Project. So those were looked at during the CIP review process, and then we also made changes to the existing funded projects, which, if you're familiar with the different watersheds we have, the best management practices projects that we do every year, shifted those around during the process. And as we were doing this, this slide might look a little familiar, but just to rehash, an interdepartmental team of team members went through and they rated each stormwater CIP project. And they looked at ranking categories on the left list, and then they did a simple one-through-five score for ranking the different ones. And the results are as follows. So gives us an understanding of the cost and the impacts. So the top-left red area would be projects that were ranked to be high-cost and low-impact, which includes the Nation Gardens, Brookside, Pocahontas Drive, Neighborhood Resilience, and right on the line is Church Creek Resiliency. So let's go, the difference being, it's not high-cost, it's no class, it's somewhere in the middle. It's a medium-cost project that has a low impact. The Woodbrook Ditch Rehab, Yellow Banks Groves, and Yacht Haven Resilience Project, and the Allen Replacement Alternative were low-cost, low-impact projects. Moving along, the top right is high-cost, high-impact, High Crest Stormwater Conservation Area, which is what we might remember as the old golf course on Pond Crest, and then also the Starky Road Basin VMP, and then the Allen's Creek Best Management Practice is the only low-cost, high-impact project. And that sets up the numbers for our Finance Director to explain us.
So as I mentioned, there's a few different options. This is from the five-year Long Range Financial Plan, and this is what the fund balance and the fund looks like over the next five years with the full 15% increase. So again, the 2026 increase is not a change from the original stormwater plan. We, in the Commission memo, there's some detail that when we were originally looking at this, we were looking at a goal of $20.38 per ERU beginning in fiscal year 2021. in fiscal year 2027. Again, this is only for the fiscal year 2026 rate, but this is not departing from that original plan. We're just going through the individual details of the projects that are selected for some of those tier two and tier three. So again, this showing 2027, even with the fifteen percent in those next two years, we would still end at about an eight percent fund balance at the end of 2027, just based on upcoming spending in the next two years. But then the fund kind of mellows out a little bit in some future years. So if we didn't, again, this is not with a reduction in expenditures, what our stormwater fund would look like with just the seven and a half percent increase. So again, we get down to four percent at the end of 2027, which is not a comfortable place to be in, especially for this fund. And then again, this is just showing no increase. If you make no movement, but we don't reduce expenditures for these projects that have been approved, we're going to be negative at the end of 2027. So in option one, as we discussed during CIP time, and as we just saw in that slide, the ones that were green, this is what's included for upcoming CIP projects. So these aren't just costs that we're going to incur in 2025. We spread the cost out based on the advancement of the project over the five-year plan, but these are just the individual details of what's included over the life of those projects with the fifteen percent. So we came up with, what would we do if the commission only approves a seven and a half percent increase tonight? And we would potentially remove the Venetian Gardens Drainage Resiliency Improvement Project. So that would allow us to only increase seven and a half percent, but then we would make no advancement on this project at all. Again, this is the rate increase. This isn't approving or disapproving these projects individually. This is just a scenario of how we could make that work. And then with no increase, we would have to remove both Brookside and Venetian Gardens in order to have a zero percent increase. So again, with our comparison chart for where have we been with the rate history, this is going back to nineteen eighty-nine and when we started, that stormwater rate fee, and then showing the two different options and proposed for 2025. So again, in 2021, we did a restructuring for the ERU to make the difference. We, it used to be in the two thousand. So the billing changed. Basically, it was a revenue-neutral change to revise if commercial was supplementing residential, but that's what happened in 2021 with that ERU change. And then we've gone back and looked at, in your sense, what do we need to support this fund based off of the stormwater asset management plan? So looking at the rate increase comparison for the surrounding municipalities, again, the year that we found the information for is noted on the left-hand side. So the two different options for where Largo would be. With regards to the tier option, we had done a study with, looking at tiering several years ago, and some of the information that came out of that, that the commission voted or decided to not tier, was that most of our properties don't have a significant difference in the size. So it wouldn't be worth going through and making the tiered structure because most of our properties are the same size for square footage. So looking at that, that's why we are only bringing a flat increase. And again, we do have a rate study planned for next year, so we'll take a look at that again in the 2026 year. So the same slide, just showing the rate increase. Again, for this one, with option one, is that two dollars and thirty-one cents, it's a dollar and sixteen cents on a per-monthly basis if we did the seven and a half percent increase. And this, again, this isn't required in the utility bill notice, but we have, we did mention it since we are advertising in the county SAP billing and our billing, which is required by the Florida statutes that we advertise in the utility bill for our sewer and our solid waste rate increases, but all of them have been available on the city website. So we are here for any questions.
Ordinance number 2025-29, and ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, amending the City of Largo Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter 23, Article 3, Stormwater Utility by amending Section 23-155, Rates and Charges, to increase the rate charge per equivalent residential unit parentheses ERU for calculating stormwater utility fees, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date.
Do you have any cards?
I have one card. Matthew Fostini.
Matt Fostini, ten fifteen, Lake Palm Drive, Largo. I'm not going to go through everything I've already gone through. We've already done seventy-eight percent increase since 2019 in our stormwater rates, costing the average resident seventy-eight dollars extra since 2019. But how do we fix this? I've suggested tiering. The commission didn't like that idea. So the next suggestion I have is, where can we save massive amounts of money? And I look at our police department, unfortunately. And I say that while the chief and the deputy chief are in this room for a reason, because we are spending per capita, as Largo, let's see here, make sure I get the right number, four hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-eight cents per capita, per resident for our police department. Do you want to know what unincorporated Pinellas County is paying for the Pinellas County Sheriff's Department? Two hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighty-one cents per capita. And the reason why I bring this up is because Commissioner Lotbala just posted this on Twitter at 601. Any ideas how to fund the sheriff? He is forty-two percent of our budget. I do not support defunding police. Pinellas has reduced property taxes three of the last four years. This year, we didn't because we're losing deputies and gave them a raise. This year, our growth is three point seven percent. Clearly, the county is ready for a conversation about where it can get money for, the sheriff's I know that this will be a tough debate. Not everyone will agree, and we might end at the same place we end up. There's going to have to be a referendum before anything can happen anyways. But leaders have debates. Leaders get the information, and then you shape the policy discussion that leads the public sphere when we make a decision as a community. But you guys don't have the information. You don't know how cost-effective our police department is compared to the sheriff. I mean, think about it. We just got rid of that huge boundary in between what the sheriff is providing and his headquarters. There's huge operational synergies there. Plus, we're looking at 201. We wouldn't need a police station anymore if we didn't have a police department. Just that. These are things we have to talk about. We're talking about fifteen percent rate increases for a third year in a row. When we're talking about raising people's bills, seventy-eight percent, seventy-three percent, thirty percent, fifty percent over a five-year period, and we're not having any serious debate on how to control spending. I hate to be the one that comes up here and sends you all the emails saying to cut spending and do this and do that. I don't want to be that person, but I am flailing trying to get this commission to see the fiscal situation its residents are in. Thank you.
That was all cards.
Comments from the commission? Oh, let's see, who's that?
That's me.
Commissioner Lauer.
So I am not a big fan of, you know, looking at rate increases either, but when it comes down to it, I don't, I don't want my house to flood either, right? I want, I want the services. I want my trash pickup. I, I want, I want the drains at the end of my street to take away the rainwater so that it doesn't end up in my house, and I don't end up in a flood zone and have to pay seven thousand dollars extra a year in taxes. So at some point, I think a modest increase in, in the services that I pay for is probably appropriate, and I can see that. So I support, I support this, and I bet you if you're in Venetian Gardens, you're probably supporting the fifteen percent, and if you're in Brookside, you're supporting at least the seven and a half percent. So what happens if one of these next projects is next to your house? Is that when, when you support it? So we have to support all of, all of our residents. So, thank you.
Commissioner DeBreezy.
Thank you. So when I look at the CIP budget for stormwater, I, you know, one of the things I wanted to commend you on is that you're, you're trying to be responsive to what we hear daily now is, you know, fix my street, it's flooding, those kinds of things. And that's, you know, recency bias, of course, for what happened, happened last year. But, you know, it's not only Venetian Gardens and Brookside if we end up doing the fifteen percent. It is building and funding and building equipment to better maintain the stormwater system in the city. So, you know, I, this is one of those budgets where we can say we're trying to be responsive to requests of our residents. So I, you know, I want to let you know, we appreciate that because, you know, those folks wanted to be heard, and they were heard, you know, but unfortunately, these things don't come free. They have to be paid for. So regarding, going back to the tiering, you did mention, and I said, those votes about not doing it were before my time, but you commented that most of the city, most of the parcels in the city are about the same size. Have, is, is that conjecture, or we actually done the work to figure out, well, what if, because we know what the sizes are? Has there been actual modeling to see if we did have tiering, what would it do?
So that was based off of the conversation we had back in 2021 after a rate study was provided then. So I can get that information as to what would that look like, and what did it look like then? But again, it's on the residential side, you're looking at, you know, what the county property appraiser's estimate is of the physical stamp of the home, not the second story, third story, and a lot of ours are. So I think even in the study that you had received, there was a variation of what one price could be versus another, but that, does that consider, you know, if you are on a corner lot, or if you're on a six-lane road versus a two-lane road, there's all these other things with impervious surface that kind of go in that's, as we've mentioned, it's a city as a whole taking care of, versus you paying for your individual lot. You know, we have neighbors that retain rainwater, so would we be giving adjustments for that? You know, I guess where does the, the barrier end up with that?
So, actually, that's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to know kind of what, what a high-cost, low-impact, what does low-impact mean as far as an improvement? So we have two of these, two of these projects that are kind of maybe on the bubble of getting done or not. What does low-impact mean as far as the, you know, how the project will help drainage?
So we can provide that feedback from that interdepartmental group to the commission, but low-impact included that list of eleven factors. Some, if you can pull up the presentation again, sorry.
Just to add on to this question, does low-impact mean it only, it affects a small portion, a small area, or, you know, I don't know if that plays into it?
So it included items as straightforward as that, and it also included items such as are certain segments of the population impacted, who are more vulnerable to flooding? It also included just generally what is the, you know, consequence of flooding in certain neighborhoods? So that impact realized. Also, since the two new projects being on the low side, you know, those were hurricane-related, not necessarily stormwater, you know, what our systems are normally designed to handle three hundred and sixty-four days out of the year, that's where the impact wouldn't be realized for these, you know, recency, you know, bias types of things, you know, a singular storm that has an impact on one neighborhood over another. Thank you.
How many miles of corrugated do we have out there? Do you have any idea? The swag is good enough.
We can find that number and send it to you. I don't have it on hand, but we know about how much it is, and it's.
Yeah, well, if you're going to look this stuff up, what's the average age of the corrugated? Because this almost looks like you're, you're just waiting for the explosion because this is going to hit a certain time, and obviously, you're not going to be replacing just a couple little blocks of this stuff. We're going to be replacing miles of it, because it's probably going to be real. In my neighborhood, part of this has already happened, you know, with the storm drain, it just wasn't working, and they finally, they tried to clear the thing out, and then they finally figured out, well, hell, the thing collapsed.
So we have those numbers. We'll send average age, miles, and whatever else, other relevant data to you.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
I have a question.
Yes? Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
My bad. Cut my bad.
So on the corrugated, I know that some of it is in unincorporated Largo, some of it's in Largo. So how, how does that differentiate between the replacement of that? So it, like, the parts of it that are in Largo are connecting to homes that are in unincorporated Largo. So how, who actually, are we responsible for replacing all of it, or does the county work with us on that? I mean, I know that it's all, you know, it's throughout the city, and I, with us having unincorporated and incorporated Largo, there's connections there. So if this pipe collapses over here on this side of the road, and it's the City of Largo, is the county going to pick up on their side?
So thankfully, we do have a working relationship with Pinellas County that we do partner on many of these projects through fund, fund sharing. In the past, a lot of times when there is a large pipe segment that includes both unincorporated and all Largo areas, typically, the county acts as project manager, and Largo is a fund source. We have contributed to that in multiple areas. And the divide of funds is separated by, it's changed over time, but really the geographic area and then the, basically the drainage area that feeds into those pipes and the impacted residents. But to the earlier part of your question, how do we know which pipes are whose? We do track all of it, and we do have a lot of discussions with Pinellas County about whose pipe is whose, and when there's conflicts, we resolve them. And so as far as, you know, having an interconnected system, it is very complex. As a very brief example, our Horizon Building will drain into a stormwater pipe that's owned by Largo, goes to Bayhead Action Pond, drains into the FDOT stormwater system on Seminole Boulevard, goes into a Largo ditch that flows into a Pinellas County ditch that goes underneath Almerton Road, which is managed by FDOT, and then goes down to Boca Sea Giveaway. So it is very complex, and we track it all.
Okay. Well, thank you for doing that. That's a lot more complicated than we thought. Thank you.
First, I do that.
Commissioner Johnson.
I'm sorry.
That's why it takes a long to get it done, though.
Well, it would drive an advocate for, you know, for the, for our region, looking at regional stormwater management.
Good idea.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you for your work on that.
Commissioner Smith.
You said that these two projects that are on here, Venetian Gardens and Brookside, they were from hurricane instead of just, just a storm, I'm guessing. Am I correct? They came out of basically the hurricane.
So during the 2025 hurricane season, those two neighborhoods were impacted by multiple hurricanes.
Okay.
And prior to the storms, those projects were not in our CIP.
Okay. Have they been impacted? We've gotten a lot of rain recently. Have they been, how have they been handling? Do we know? Have we been out there, been getting calls?
Absolutely. We've been out there proactively ever since then, maintaining the current system as best we can, making sure the pipes are clear, and any, you know, open conveyances such as ditches behind the Venetian Gardens neighborhood, we've been cleaning that out. I am not savvy of any service requests that have come in, but we can look those up and provide them to the commission for the rest, you know.
I'm upset, but like, we just saw Polk County had a one, a thousand-year flood kind of deal. This is the future. I hate to say it to people. We're dealing with this, we're way behind the eight ball on a lot of this stuff. So I just, I'm concerned that we just keep small piecing this and picking little projects every time they come about, and we get, neighborhood gets upset because their houses are flooded or something like that because another hurricane or a rain torrent, and we're just kind of trying to catch up, and I just, I get the, the amount, I just, I still don't think that, I don't know. I do, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion. You got two choices there.
I move to approve ordinance number 2025-29, option two, option one, excuse me, on first reading and schedule a second reading and public hearing on August 5th, 2025.
Second. Second.
That's the 15%, right?
Yes.
I got a, I got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zip.
Thank you.
Ordinance number 2025 dash 30.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Commission. Throughout the course of the year, operational and personnel changes, grant opportunities, emergencies, and necessary administrative changes arise that warrant amending the originally adopted budget. This ordinance is a quarterly amendment to the adopted budget to account for the following changes. In the Recreation, Parks, and Arts Department, allocating $245,000 in Parkland impact fees for Largo Central Park restroom site work. This project is partially funded via the American Rescue Plan Act, also known as ARPA, and state appropriation grant funding for a prefabricated building that has been approved and ordered. This item is related to authorization to expend funds approved at the July 1st commission meeting. In the Police Department, allocating $130,000 in the Police Federal Forfeiture Funds to purchase portable traffic bollards. This item is related to authorization to expend funds approved at the June 3rd commission meeting. Allocating $35,000 in the Police Federal Forfeiture Fund to replace two refrigerators and one additional ice maker. This item is related to authorization to expend funds approved at the June 3rd commission meeting. Allocating $25,000 in the Police Donations Fund for a storage structure at the Police Canine Compound. This item is a general use storage structure within the Canine Compound that is located within the Environmental Services Site. The structure would be classified as a non-permanent prefabricated building to be located on an existing concrete pad. In Community Development, allocating $209,900 for consulting services for building permitting and plan review customer service engagement. Services consist of analysis and review of customer service workflow and processes in the city's building and planning review, awarded to Plant and Moran, P L L C, at the June 3rd commission meeting. In the Administration Department, transferring an allocation of $30,000 from, from the Administration Department to the Information Technology Department for consultant services related to importing data into the data warehouse. This item is a net neutral transfer of general fund appropriation that would allow Information Technology Department to acquire services aimed at finalizing the city's data warehouse, which is needed to further Largo's performance initiatives. Allocating $50,000 for consulting services related to the redevelopment of City Hall Funds that will be used for the FY 2025 portion of the Agenda Mema previously presented this evening related to the 201 Highland Redevelopment Consulting Services with CBRE. This concludes all item on the Q3 Budget Amendment. Staff is available for questions.
Ordinance number 2025 dash 30 and the ordinance of the city of Largo, Florida, amending the fiscal year 2025 budget adopted by Resolution Number 2406 as amended by budgeting $694,900 to fund Largo Central Park restroom site work, to fund the purchase of portable traffic bollards, to fund the replacement of two refrigerators and to add one ice maker within the police department, to fund consultant services for building permitting and plan review customer service engagement, for technology consultant services related to the city's data warehouse, for consultant services related to the search for a developer for the redevelopment of the City Hall Site, and to fund, fund a storage structure at the Police Canine Compound, all as shown in Appendix A attached to this ordinance, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Do you have any cards?
I have no cards.
Really?
I'm really mad.
Comments from the Darius?
Me.
Michael?
I've been here a couple of years. But this seems like we're getting a lot more of these, this cycle than I've ever noticed of these readjustments. Is there something that I, I'm missing? Or my, my memory kind of going? I just don't remember this many of them happening every year. That's just spitballing off my, my head. The other is the Parkland impact piece for the bathroom. What, what is the total cost of this bathroom?
Yep, so currently, we have a $300,000 grant from the state. And then the rest, which is about $721,000 currently, is from ARPA. So this item is requesting additional funds in the Parkland impact fees. So it'll total a little bit over $900,000.
Spending over a million dollars on a bathroom.
It'll be around $900,000.
Okay. I, God. Okay, I'm gonna pull that one out. The Canine, I, I wanna, dear God. I wonder what, what parties would be easier? The, the other one, the Canine Compound, I want to thank the people who donate to the police department for that fund. I think that's a great use for that, those, those, that, that resource. Our Canine Unit do a great job and I appreciate everything there. My other comment is I just, the other one was the, more my comment, I'm not big on the last one with the $50,000, but that was here and there, say, that was just, I wanted to make a comment. I don't like that one either, but other than that, that's more of a comment. Thank you.
Nobody else? I'll entertain a motion.
I just, I just want to add regarding the bathroom and some of the other costs we're seeing. Most reflective of cost of inflation from the time that the projects originally scope for material supplies. Well, that's up from the original amount.
I'll still entertain a motion. You can't make it.
Don't want to.
I move to approve ordinance number 2025 dash 30 on first reading and schedule a second reading and public hearing on August 5th, 2025.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes six zip. Ordinance number 2025 31.
Good evening. First reading of ordinance 2025 31 amends the FY 25 budget in the amount of $6,992,675 for hurricane recovery expenditures. On September 24th, 2024, the governor issued a state of emergency for Hurricane Helene. On October 5th, 2024, Pinellas County declared a state of emergency for Hurricane Milton. During both activation periods, the city accumulated $6,992,675 in expenses related to emergency activities including overtime, fuel, and emergency supplies. The city is actively working on receiving reimbursements from FEMA-related activities. This budget amendment retroactively appropriates additional funding to the affected departments and funds these expenses. Steph is ready for questions.
Ordinance number 2025 dash 31 and ordinance of the city of Largo, Florida, amending the fiscal year 2025 budget adopted by Resolution Number 2406 as amended by budgeting $6,992,675 to fund contractual obligations, overtime expenses, and miscellaneous expenditures related to Hurricane Helene and Milton response, all as shown in Appendix A attached to this ordinance, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Do you have any cards?
I have no cards.
Comments from the Darius?
I just had to add one question. Of, of that 6.9 million, how much do we expect to be reimbursed from FEMA?
I will have to turn to Rebecca, our finance director, for the.
So the amount that we're seeking reimbursement is actually over and above, you know, the, the budget amount that we're doing the amendment for is the unbudgeted expenditures. But in some cases, we use our own, what they call force account, which would be our staff due to re-removal. So we're eligible to seek reimbursement for that. So in the solid-based fund, it's actually slightly higher than that amount. Budget amendment also includes the cost for fuel, whereas we can't submit to people for fuel, but we can submit for our equipment usage, which is actually a better rate because of the wear and tear. So we work, actually, every day I work on this claim with the state of Florida and FEMA. And we've been reimbursed so far 2.7 million. And that was from the debris claim. So we'll work on that for later.
Okay. Hey, are we optimistic that that, I mean, that that will be refunded at some point? Or is this?
So with, with meeting the criteria, there, you know, we do have some expenditures that are outside of the period of availability. So what FEMA does is they, they give you a certain time period. And anything that's after that time period, you might be not eligible for. And there's also reimbursement amounts that they're eligible for 100% in this certain time period, or the federal cost share might be 75%. So again, if that happens, we do have some periods of that with the re-removal that we are only eligible for the federal cost share of 75% and the state share of 12.5%, which means the city would infer 12.5% of the total. So we are optimistic that we will get that full amount that's listed there back.
Great. 12.5's way better than 100.
Yes.
And consider, our community still receives the benefit of the services we provide. We just didn't receive reimbursement. So for example, rubbish that was hauled away, that was put out in the yard outside the period, still would be items we would need to remove. It's just the reimbursement rate for the, from the hurricane fund is less.
Anybody else? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance number 2025 dash 31 on first reading and schedule a second reading and public hearing on August 5th, 2025.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passing six zip. Items from the Darius.
I'll second.
Thank you. I don't know.
It passed. Items from the Darius. This, the city attorney.
Just to, there was a question earlier about the Duke Agreement and who pays for the removal of equipment? That is depending on how the agreement ends, how it concludes. So if we end it, then it's our cost. If they request to terminate early, then they would pay for it. And if we elect to buy the equipment, then obviously it's not removed. So there's certain conditions in that. And then there was, it came up about the fundraiser. We have provided some opinions in the past on this. I can work with the manager if there's something more specific. The city is limited in terms of gathering money to confer for public funds for private benefit. But if there's a specific program you'd like for us to look at, we will absolutely run an analysis.
I think it's more just pointing them in the right direction. You know, you can contact that outfit or this one or this one. They, they may be able to, the city, no, you can't do it directly. There's no way to do that. That's not legal.
I know.
That's right, you're a lawyer.
So that's it from my office.
Commissioner Johnson.
I apologize.
Nothing. Commissioner DeBreezy.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Commissioner Lowser.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Commissioner Hall.
I just want to congratulate Sergeant Nicole Cusamano on a well-deserved promotion. And thank staff, as always, for your hard work and helping us understand the ins and outs and ups and downs. And my colleagues for great discussion tonight and, and not just rubber stamping and moving. Anyway, thank you.
Commissioner Smith.
Yeah, I had a, I don't know if you all got the same one, but I got an email from Canine Champions asking if in September, we can recognize National Service Dog Month with a proclamation. This is their celebration of their 50th anniversary. So I was wondering if maybe we could add that or put that on the agenda for September's meeting. Or again, that would be for the National Service Dog Month. They did also provide boarding, so I can forward that if needed. And again, thank you to staff for everything you do. I know I'm a pain in the butt sometimes, so I appreciate everything. And that's all I have.
That's it?
Mm-hmm. You told me.
Oh, that's pretty quick for you. I was serious when I said if you've got suggestions about the budget, share your ideas. You know, we're, we're not omnipotent up here. If, if you, you study it, read the thing through. If you got any ideas, you think we should cut personnel out of various departments, tell us where and why. You know, you just can't go in there willy-nilly and just, you know, start swinging the old ax. But, you know, anything that you want to suggest, we, take a look at the thing. But, you know, this is our money, your money, my money, our money. It's up to us on how it's gonna get spent. It's, it's just that easy. So anyway, anything you have, bring it forward. Your turn.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have had a lot of questions about a recent event this weekend involving one of our police officers who was injured in a high-speed accident on East Bay. Have been in contact with her. She's doing well. She's home recovering from her injuries, none of which fortunately were serious. The other driver in the accident was severely injured and still in intensive care. But I did pass along her, to, to our officer, everyone's concerns and prayers. And she was very grateful for, for the outbreak. So with that, we're, we're very grateful that she is safe and well.
Very good. Thank you. Dan, you got any?
Yes, I have three things. And the first one I'm really not sure about. It's what, during the tax rate discussion, Commissioner Smith was asking for notes on something?
I want a five-year comparison of what we, the increases at then, just like we did on the, the stormwater fees and.
Five-year comparison on increases. And the tax rate?
Yes, please.
And the mileage rate?
Mileage rate, that's all right. Mileage rate.
And I believe that was one of the slides in the presentation, but you can.
And then I had a request by Vice Mayor Holmes for the amount of revenue from selling recyclables and a request by Vice Mayor Holmes for the number of miles of corrugated drainage pipe, as well as the average age.
That's it. Dismissed. Have a good evening.